Greetings, can you all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, I'm so glad you told me.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
And the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation on God indivisible. Liberty and justice for all. Greetings, welcome to the June 6th meeting of the Harvard Committee.
Ron Reed.
We have Herbert Sambel, Mary Ann Eddy, Vice Chair John Parker, Lili Fell, Doris Alvarez is running that part of the show. Elizabeth Vale, our counsel, and Brent Reiner is our environmental consultant. Welcome all. Let me get my notes here. There's the agenda. Get the agenda? Okay.
The minutes first.
Okay, has everybody looked at the minutes? All good?
Yeah.
Any observations or comments?
I like the new format, Doris. It's easier to read.
So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so it has been approved, Doris. I got two comments and questions. This is the public session strictly for general questions. You may not comment on pending applications. Is there anybody here or in Zoom land? If anyone would like to speak up?
No hands.
No hands?
Okay.
Okay, so let's move along to item three, decisions. This is David Burke and Anita Leahy at 62 Joel's Lane.
I'm registered for decisions today.
Yeah.
Greetings.
Hi, my name is Lori Wolter.
Yep.
Then by the services.
So Brent, you want to walk us through it?
Yeah, great. So the board has refused application and has closed the hearing on all matters. This is the 66 Joel's Lane property that fronts along the pond. Or you don't have to say. It's in a R20 building district in the X zone. The applicant has submitted all appropriate application materials. Close. It's an application for demolition of the existing residence and construction. New storage residence, patio, swimming pool, and associated old fence, deck, outdoor shower, one story garage, previous style driveway, accessory apartment, dry wells, IA with a sanitary system, and the establishment of a 50-foot, continuous 50-foot non-ascendant stonemobile station. Weapon for fire. Project does meet all standards of chapter 285. Weapon regulations. And this is a type two action. Also didn't need exempt from coastal consistency review requirements. Therefore, the permit is in order with following conditions. Any further modifications to the approved plans requires authorization by our committee. Requires modest taking. So you can't. Yeah, must verify that all optional permits to the bond are intended, are valid, require support. All construction debris shall be gathered during and after construction process, properly disposed of. Erosion control fence will be installed along the proposed limit of disturbance to prevent sediment beyond the approved limit of disturbance during construction activity. Erosion control fence shall be maintained to ensure its functionality throughout construction process. All worker vehicles, equipment, demolition, free construction materials necessary to complete work shall be staged on site. All provided with the claim. Exemptions of this approval also acknowledges continuing, I mean continuing jurisdiction of the Harvard Committee in the future and allow for inspection of the site. The purpose is ensuring that all conditions are any period on that. Prior to inspection of the work, the applicant shall provide a copy of this permit and discuss the conditions of approval with the site contact. Ensure compliance with the conditions. All work permitted by this weapon permit shall be executed and avoided with any adverse effects to the property, fully adjoining weapons, greater surface water areas across. Covenant state, if this non-ascendant stonemobile station buffer will be established on such a property, as demonstrated on the approved plan. This buffer shall be memorialized and covenant restrictions that must be reviewed, submitted to and reviewed by the village attorney and fire department file first office. A final survey prepared by a licensed surveyor shall be submitted to the Harvard Committee upon completion of the approved activities. This survey shall demonstrate the location dimensions, area calculation and weapon setbacks of all site improvements associated with this weapon permit. Established planted covenants of weapon buffer shall be clearly shown and labeled on the final survey. The 50-foot non-ascendant stonemobile station weapon buffer shall remain as natural habitat condition. The village environment consultant shall inspect the improvements and the weapon buffer prior to issues of basically the required needs. And the village building department and village environment consultant shall be notified on commencement and completion of the approved activities. All of this is subject to, sorry, is, uh, prescribed to the site survey prepared by Gary Vance, LS, last revised January 26, 2024. And if approved, permit shall expire soon here for the villages. Any questions?
How large is the ADU? And the, the IA system is, um, what size is that, Brent?
What size is the IA system?
Yes.
Like how many bedrooms?
How many, yeah, how, yeah, how is that sized?
The capacity is based on the number of bedrooms in the house.
Right.
I don't, I have to fill out the requirements. Maybe Lord.
The ADU is piped to the same system.
Right.
And the, it's 21 by 25. That's the size.
How many bedrooms?
Uh, I don't have plans for this, this building.
Okay.
But whatever the code allows, if it's only two is matched. Yeah. Two is the maximum.
For an ADU?
For an accessory apartment, yeah.
Well, it's 21 by 25?
Correct.
You're gonna get two bedrooms?
Probably not.
Not probably not, but I get the idea.
Four hundred and change.
Yeah. Okay, I, I just was curious what that was. Okay.
Is that the, uh, copy of the covenant restrictions applied, which is included with this permit and the permit is in order?
Where, where is the covenant sit in the file of a project? So if you go to the village and you request to look at the file, where, where does that covenant typically reside?
Whatever Doris says, I'm putting the recorded copy. Where do you put the?
It's in the wetlands, it's in the wetlands file with the non-permitted possession.
But it's supposed to be recorded before we've spoken.
That's right, so it has to be recorded.
It's recorded at the county.
And how long does that take to become a finished document?
It takes a little while because they have to give you a title certification. If there's a mortgage, they have to get a mortgage consent. Um, and sometimes that could take a little time. Uh, but generally it takes about two months, two to three months to get a covenant, uh, recorded at the county. Written, approved by me, then reported at the county, they give it back to the owners.
But before there's a CO?
Before CO, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And it's reported against the property and it runs with the land.
Runs with the land.
Yes, so anybody buys the property knows that there's a couple.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
Yeah, do I hear a motion to approve the application?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, Brent?
Yes.
Uh, it had been approved and I guess, does this have to go to, what other departments does this have to go to?
Well, they think that there is only where the appeals listed. So I believe that they are ready to.
No, we need to go to the health department with this weapons determination.
Oh, I'm sure they've completed the technical review.
It's all approved except for.
I just needed.
Because you had gone already to zoning board after the first initial meetings with all the stuff.
Health department's approved the design of the sanitary system, but they won't give us a permit until we give them the weapons.
Uh huh.
It's DDC's NJ. Um, it's all wrapped up.
Thank you for your patience.
And what like is this ARP?
No, ARP is already done, we have to extend it. Anthony ruined a lot to care about, but it's an expire in July, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Okay. I gotta take this for.
Correspondence?
Uh, continued public hearing, 170.
There's a correspondence, are we, do we have to do something on a correspondence?
There is a letter in, on the record, you have a copy of.
To the next page.
Period, full stop, we're done.
And this is reference to 37 Glover Street.
Oh, I see.
Is that the new construction there? At the new construction there, the big property that just sold?
They started digging there, you know?
Is that Glover Street, the one that's been?
So what's the status of that project?
Well, there was a, a permit issued and they're asking for it to be transferred into the holding.
Yeah.
Please see the present, uh, A vote to do that.
Okay.
Is it re-approved to be sent?
It expired. 12 Glover.
37 Glover, they're just requesting to.
It says to extend timeframes of the approved 285.
It's been a, a long time since we saw that property.
On the May, so they submitted in April.
Want to make sure.
And it expired on the 6th, 2022. No. This is old one. Oh, it is this from last year. It's just a transfer.
Correct.
We've already extended it, is that what you're saying?
Oh.
Where's the letter request, let's read it into the record. So they know what it says. Thanks.
Not getting any signal.
All it says is for the property located at 37 Glover Street, said Harbor, New York. We are requesting transfer of chapter 285 weapon permit into the new ownership's name, Glover Harbor Holdings LLC. That's it. That's the only request to the board.
And we have a current live permit right now?
Wow, just have it better filed last year.
Oh, so this, it is updated.
It said May, and I thought it was May 2024, it's 20.
Okay.
So you must have extended this.
Okay, so I guess, do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve this name change on the permit.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the 37 Glover Street transfer is approved. Got that, Doris? Thank you. That's all right, uh, the continued public hearings, 174 Main Street. Is there somebody here that would like to?
Come on down.
Come on up, come on down.
Greg Rhodes.
Hi, Greg.
174 Main Street and, um, uh, last time we were here, we were asked to provide a buffer planting plan. Uh, our, um, one of the members of our board is, uh, Silas Martyr, uh, he walks through site with, um, representative Schmidt and Lee from, uh, MPV and they, they produced a planting plan, which is basically, so, uh, we are hoping that that could be the last step in getting the approval.
Have you seen the plan, Brent? Oh, yes, of course you have.
Historical society on site, talk about the species, appropriate vegetation, as you gave it buffer, execution protocol, and, um, the historical society that submitted a planting plan for Martyrs, which we've determined to be appropriate and, um, in keeping with the chapter 285 standards. And we have no further issues with closed restoration of the roots.
And we have a proposed permit here.
So if the board is okay, I mean, this, this is the last piece, we did that a lot of other things with them already. The board just wanted to see a planting plan, which we now have, be free with it. Um, if the board is wanting to close the hearing tonight, I have draft the weapon permit for consideration. Board wants to do so.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Yeah, so do we need a motion for that?
I think you need a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, so do I hear a motion to close?
I'll move.
Oh, wait, pardon. Anybody in the public that would like to speak about this?
I have no hands.
No hands?
Okay. With, with, with no request to make further comments, I, I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so noted, so we are closed and.
That would be a motion to.
Happy planning, everything else, sweetie.
Did you ever imagine from the little sketches that we saw originally? Ever heard that behind what a long strange trip it's been?
He hasn't shown.
Yeah, but congratulations.
Oh, wait, I think, don't we have to ask Brent to write that? Okay.
So that, yes, I'm sorry, I was asking after the meeting is over. I think before we do it right now.
Okay.
If you're ready.
Sure.
Since we're on it.
Uh huh.
You don't have to stand, but you may.
No, you have to stand.
Your job is, your job is finished.
So, so, so Brent, you're just gonna go over the, the proposed permit?
Just gotta go, yeah, I know you first.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll just go through the permit real quickly.
Great.
We just did.
Yes.
So again, this is a 184 Main Street, historical society.
174.
Sorry, 174, um. This is a proposal for relocation of existing accessory building for landlord location on the project site. Structure of the different building adjacent, relocated building, structure of the bathroom connection. Relocated, newly disposed accessory buildings, structure of the deck, structure of the hanging cat frame. The establishment of a 50-foot variable width, non-ascendant stonemobile station. Buffer and implementation of the base species plan, the native species restoration plan. Um, again, the project has been noted as meeting the chapter 25 standards. With a 50-foot variable width buffer. Uh, the applicant has advised that a proposed weapon buffer must be covenanted at condition of permits. This is a type two action based upon the SEPA criteria. By the intent for coastal consistency review requirements. And this permit would be subject to following conditions. Any further modifications to the approved plans, from requires authorization by the Harvard Committee prior to the modification of the petition. Yeah, must verify that all applicable permits with proposed improvements have been obtained are valid, require support. A covenant of 50-foot variable width, non-realization, non-disturbance buffer, weapon buffer measuring 3739 square feet will be established, as demonstrated on the approved plan. The basic species management and native restoration plan have been submitted for review and approval for referred designated weapon buffers to native habitat. All construction debris shall be gathered during and after construction process and properly disposed of so that it does not make explaining to adjacent weapon or adjacent properties. Erosion control fence will be installed along the proposed limit of disturbance to prevent sediment beyond approved limits of service during construction activity. The erosion control fence shall be maintained to ensure its functionality throughout construction process. All worker, all worker vehicles, equipment, demolition, free construction materials necessary to complete the approved work shall be staged on site and off the right way of Main Street.
That's hard.
Exemptions of this approval also acknowledges continuing jurisdiction of the Harvard Committee. In the future, it allows for inspection of the site, the purpose of ensuring that all the conditions are any period on that. Prior to the inspection of the work, the applicant shall provide a copy of this permit and discuss the conditions of approval with the site contact, ensure compliance with the conditions contained in it. All work permitted by this weapon permit shall be executed and avoided with any adverse impacts to neighboring property, fully joined weapon, freshwater weapons, and greater surface waters. The final survey prepared by a New York State licensed surveyor shall be submitted to Harvard Committee upon completion of the approved activities. This survey shall demonstrate the patient dimension, area calculation, and weapon setbacks of all site improvements associated with this weapon. Established planted covenant, this weapon buffer. Um, once the proposed buffer area is planted, because of the planning plans, survey is shown, expected by the village consultant prior to the issues of certificate of occupancy. Village, however, the city village department shall be notified of the activities. Qualified professionals, performing field inspection once a year for the initial three-year periods, verifying the viability of all new plants upon issuance of this certificate of access. The village department office and village consultant shall be notified of commencement, status, and completion of the work. And 85 to 100% total plant survival rate will be considered a successful planting after the initial three-year period. Annual summary reports including photographs and description of plant survival shall be submitted to the building department office and village environment consultant until the three-year period is complete and survival demonstrated. Buffer area shall be memorialized and covenanted restrictions that verify the location and condition of the buffer to be maintained in the property and those restrictions to ensure preservation of the vestedated weapon buffer. These covenants, um, shall be submitted to, um, and approved by the village attorney and shall be filed in the county clerk's office, filed in the county shops, and back to the village. Um, this should all be done prior to the issuance of this certificate of access. This permit and its conditions are reck, in recognition of the proposed site plan prepared by Ash Michael Hammer, last revised April 2nd, 2024, and acceptable management plan by Martyrs stated before. If approved, permit shall expire immediately, the development and the vet. Do you believe the permit is?
Uh, Mr. Rhodes, when do you anticipate, uh, starting construction?
I would say within, we're gonna try to stop you about six months. Hopefully completed well over two years.
Um, do I hear a motion?
Asked about the covenants, um, how do we, um, provide that?
It's also a draft, where do you like to pack it?
Uh.
A sample?
Okay.
Review and make your turn. But if I stop and leave, I approve it, then you go report it with the titles.
Okay.
There's instructions in the packet, yeah.
It's all out there. You can reach out, it's.
All right.
We'll get a letter. Right, we got a letter.
Okay.
So I guess we need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, the permit as?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So you will present that to Doris for processing?
Have the, uh.
We can sign it right now, so.
You have it. Thank you.
Lili?
Thank you.
Okay. Craig, thanks for your patience.
Good luck.
Okay, thanks guys.
All right, good luck.
So we all get free membership?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the next project, Pumpkin Partners, has been tabled until, I guess, our July? Which, which day is July?
The next meeting is closed on July 4th.
It'll be on 4th of July?
I'm not gonna be here.
So village office will be closed, um, for holiday. So we need to, we'll be scheduled to be scheduled and I.
Or just skip it?
Side.
It's so funny about that.
That I looked into with the note card under Justice Board and, um, we discussed this right now, you wanna end the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, we'll think about it.
Yep.
I think, I think you actually came up with a good idea there, amigo.
Next, so any emotion, do you need a jam at 22?
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, too, let me too long.
And that's at their request?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will table that until?
Next meeting.
The next meeting.
July.
May or may not be in July. Um, moving on to new business. Uh, 25 Terry Drive.
Evening, Chris Downs. Doing a Christmas tree sale of the old apartment the applicant would be tonight is date of Hilton from the, uh, counter from the.
Okay.
Again, rather detailed narrative.
I make a motion open the public hearing.
Right here. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are open to the public here, 25 Terry. Proceed.
So there's a very detailed, um, narrative that was submitted to the village to assist the Nelson Pope, who are his agent review and the application. Number of items that are coming out, certain things going back to. But it's basically a renovation, it's the components, it's the early features. It's founded on, uh, by the, uh, health.
So I went by there today. There's a lot of new construction.
Yeah, they're refacing the, uh, the building with the shingles.
Oh, it looks like a lot of the work that was described here has already been done.
Uh, well, to clarify, we have a permit to do an interior restoration. Harvard shows interior work, I believe.
You do have a permit?
Yes. Yeah, we obtained a permit.
But what about the shed?
The shed, the shed was not replaced, that was an existing shed, it's being reshingled. But there's no new shed. The proposed scope of work is to remove that shed and make it bigger. So there's an addition to that existing shed being proposed in this application. But there, the shed was pre-existing. That's there.
And have you extended the building already?
No.
No.
No, it's, it's a thing. We did, the application for the exterior work is purely for shingle replacement. The shingles are falling off, that's why it's a problem. So we were renovating exterior, I'll give you a little bit more history. There was a pipe burst, uh, the previous winter, uh, that destroyed half of the interior of the house. So as a way to repair it, we, uh, retained interior. So the interior work is basically wall replacement and retaining surfaces, refinishing the wall surfaces. But it's purely interior, no new windows, uh, no exterior work. Then as we were doing this, we kind of then realized, uh, the shingles were really dilapidated and it's a problem. It's got some water damage to the side, here's the, the wall. So we did apply this department to replace the shingles in kind because of the, uh, the damage to it and there's a, there's a section of the code that allows us to do that without having to go through the N R B or, uh, have this, that this particular board's interests are a lot of. Basically, the shingles on the side of the house, there's no adjustment that's been, uh, done to insurance anywhere, so.
So we have zoning. So we have Sony one appeals approval. And we have A R B approval for the.
So it looks like the inside is a gut renovation, you've taken off.
The new work, yes, the, so the interior work. We're basically reconfiguring the entire interior of the house.
Because I walk by there, it's dirty.
Oh, well, currently, we're, they took out all the tile, replaced the bathroom tiles and stuff and carpet and all that. Um, but the, the footwork demonstrated here, it actually uh. Some sort of infill additions to the house, uh, and we're reconfiguring the entire layout, which we haven't, we're not doing current.
What's an, what's an infill?
Okay, so I use that term because that was. So, for example, um, for the east side, we're still kind of packing out, so it's free for adding to the existing shed. One hundred and ten square feet. Bill, at the north side, uh, on the water side, it is thirty-six square feet, so there's a little indication of the building. Uh, and the back, on the back facade, right in the middle of the house, that would be infilling, so we're basically turning that into interior space. Making the kitchen a little bit bigger, making second floor bedroom.
Sure, we're not exceeding the maximum size of the footprint.
Yeah, we're all, we're within uh.
Simple, simple uh example would be houses like this, but they're filling in between the two.
And they're correct, and there's.
Let us take this one step at a time, so is it clear to you what they're talking about with the infilling? It's meaning like the, no, so let's talk about that a little bit more, let us look at the diagrams to understand it's more completely.
New shed.
We have an old.
So this survey, um, it's a shame it's not larger. It's really, you know, so we don't.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, great.
This is our site plan, but it's representing what's shown in this survey.
I know, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have dimensions to setback.
Like, today I walk the deck, here it does, and it's twenty-two feet. I walk the space from the deck to the bulkhead.
Do you have a larger drawing of this?
Well.
Which is where the current deck is.
Decision to the extent that we needed a variance on any side.
Yeah.
We just had.
We have a, we're a different board.
But uh, so this hatch area here, there's a lot of information that was required to be added to the survey.
Hmm.
Right, so there is a lot of action in here, but this hatch, the great hatch where it says proposed shed. That's the addition on the east side, it says bumping out the shed, that little like on infill, but. Add on thirty-six square feet in this little zone here, right in the middle of the house facing.
This is thirty-six square feet?
Correct.
And the, and how much is the bump out on the east?
The east side is one hundred and ten square feet.
Hmm.
And then the largest area is actually on this, it's for this, the northwest corner, on this corner. There is an addition to the existing house, that's one hundred and seventy-nine square feet.
So you. So you're bumping the house up?
Yeah, it's being, there's an addition to it. The inf, literally, I got that from the. The report called it infill, but we, it's an addition to that.
Oh, in areas.
And there's also an addition to the north or south side of the house here, and these are all one-story additions.
And, and on the side yard, you're all within setback requirements?
Yes, well, well, we have a variance, we went to Z P A.
We have a difference set of.
Oh, excuse, I'm sorry. Ask the question.
Yeah, so we have no structures within seventy-five feet of the mean high water line.
Oh, correct.
Or wetlands, so how far from, I guess, in this case, your bulkhead? Is that construction? And this construction has taken place already, I assume, because you've already put shingles on it, right?
Not the new decks.
No, not, not the decks, but these.
I'm sorry, the whole, the entire roof is replaced, you reshingle the exterior, the inside is gutted down to the studs. And it looks, when I went by today, I mean, I've been watching this, it is completely gutted to the studs, you haven't just pulled out tiles.
Well, in a certain area, we, we brought it, yeah.
The house is gutted, the whole lower level.
I can maybe walk you through existing conditions.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if I have a problem with that, if it's like all interior and the footprint. But what, I'm just feeling that there's an inconsistency when you're saying, well, all we did is we reshingle, but in fact, these places where you bumped out. You've reshingled those already, no, you had not?
No, they.
Okay.
We reshingled the existing house in kind, the same house has been there for forty, fifty years.
Okay.
Uh, we are going to have to reshingle those areas for the addition, the addition will be built and we'll reshingle.
So that area plus the area over here, the bump out?
Everything is shown as an addition here, will be an addition with shingles.
Okay.
And then the proposed decks, there are decks there that are pretty cattywampus, there's, but he's, they're sloping the wrong way, et cetera. Um, do we have drawings that show the existing decks with the proposed deck overlay?
Yeah, there's, there's a, uh, well, there's an existing survey that. That shows existing decks, and then our removals plan versus.
Proposed.
That's, that's a planky plant, so it's not really.
Yeah, that's. What, can you, can you show us what drawing shows the existing?
Let me just say, like, not getting resources overall.
That's true.
Everything is.
But the decks?
It's just replacing a property.
Yeah.
It's expanding the deck, isn't it, towards the bulkhead?
No, it's a, we're replacing the deck.
In the same dimensions, same footprint?
Yes.
I must have understood that.
We wanted to maintain the, the lock.
And you're putting permeable, it looks like you want to, you'd like to put a permeable paper.
Yes, there's a permeable paper area that is extended closer to this.
Between the deck and.
Yeah.
This newer and bait them, so that we're not proposing.
Are you upgrading the septic system?
Uh, no, we don't have to, because we're not modifying it.
Oh, but we'd really like you to.
Wait, because, because what?
Well, we're, we're required to because of the uh, the bathroom count, or bedroom count has not changed. Proposed. If there's, there's a count of bedrooms and that's what drives. Living space is what drives.
Twenty-five percent of the construction cost.
Cause you're right on the water, and it would be such a nice way to.
Can you clarify when the renovation?
Triggers.
Triggers?
So there's um. In section ninety-two of the village code is, I took a picture. It's, I think, when you're increasing twenty-five percent of the floor area.
Yeah, four hundred, four hundred and a half.
It's all new residential construction. Any? I have it here. I have it here. All, all new residential construction, any substantial se- system, septic system upgrade or replacement of the septic system required by Suffolk Health Services. Or an increase of twenty-five percent or more of the floor area. And then finally, any new septic system or substantial septic system upgrade required by the harbor committee pursuant to the village code, chapter two eighty-five. That's you guys, and then five is all non-residential properties that require safe then for both of seven to three hundred dash fourteen. So it would be um ninety-two dash twenty-one, seven four, if you guys, if this board deemed as required.
That's a pretty broad mandate for us. There's, that just says if we require it. It's, it's a requirement.
Well, you have to look at your standards, and then if you're finding, if you make findings to support that it would mitigate the potential uh construction on the site. You have to make those findings to support the requirement.
Easy.
Is there, is.
But you'd also cite this section as well.
Does it have anything to do with the um? Value of the renovation?
That's other municipalities.
We don't have that.
No.
Are you sure? I thought it was if there was like.
There's a twenty-five percent of the floor area, that's the one that's in the code.
Huh.
There's fifty percent of the value that's in uh other municipalities.
That's a, that's an interesting loophole.
How do you think it's a loophole? I think it's just a different standard.
Well, if you, if you gutted the house a hundred percent.
Right.
And you just kept the, the frame, um, one would, could argue that uh it might be a nice time to put in a I A system.
I think the village uh looked at the standards from the Suffolk Health Department that were recommended and used those as a, as a template for the code too. And then looked at other municipalities.
So is your, um, is your client here on Zoom watching this?
No, he just basically.
Why would he what?
Really had a hipper.
So why today? Why, why, why wouldn't he want to put in an I A system?
Anyone ask him? Did you ask him?
I mean.
We, well, I mean, it's gonna disturb the property, it's the only place.
No, 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 no.
System drive.
Yeah, that's fine.
They would go where the existing system would be.
Dennis, uh, Mr. Downs, it will disturb the environment more if they don't do it than if they do do it. Right, north of this is the beautiful bay that we are mandated to protect. And to go and, is this a primary residence?
Uh, they're, they're often, it's not primary, but.
Well, it'd be nice to see them or hear from them, to see, you, you can certainly, and many times, we have put. Uh, I A systems in a driveway. So that's, that's a.
Yeah, I know, and they have the special uh lids, we've done that before.
Right. And we've also had um people come, and they weren't strictly obligated to put one in. And they ended up agreeing, because when you're doing this massive amount of work, especially with the kind of, you know, grant you can get. It's de minimis in terms of expense.
Yeah.
It's really. No?
I'm having a hard time, well, anyway, there's.
Well, I'm going through the, why do you say the grants?
But it's worth asking, if you'd like us to, we'll, we'll ask.
Not for a second home, it's not.
That would be great.
I don't think you can for a second home.
I don't think that's true.
Well, I just asked.
Well, we've been clamping down with.
We have homes next door, it's our second home. I need to see some, I need some help here looking at.
I know, it's, I saw some reading in one of the little.
Do you have any wetlands delineations or buffer on this, on these drawings?
Some grass is growing on the seaward side of the bulkhead. So.
Yeah, there, there, there's a lack of information from what we can make a decision here.
Well, let me ask, ask Brent, this is.
This thing was vetted by. I'm not sure of ten million, but I know it was vetted by the prior permanent inspector. Seen it before. To make sure we didn't run afoul. And we spent last year getting this.
That, that's fine, but there's.
Dennis, you understand that that's saying that the horseshoe crab has approved it, but the goat didn't, because we're different, we have different standards, and we have a different mandate. Right? I don't like the tone of my voice, but. No.
Makes decisions.
No.
And if he says, I need you to do this, this, and this, and he said, well, I need you to go to, that's where you go.
Okay, okay, all we're saying, all I'm saying.
Like, why don't we talk to uh. So, yeah, and uh maybe he'll agree to it.
Well, that's, that's one thing, but what we have to have on these documents, unless I'm missing it, are strings from the wetlands and the buffer. So we haven't even gotten to that discussion yet, because I don't. It's, it's very small, I, do you have a wetlands?
They have a.
If I can do a check.
They have a high watered line.
Brett, we have a, we have a bulkhead here, is this a situation where this is, would be categorized as a bluff?
No.
No, it wouldn't be.
No, you have jurisdiction from the wetland boundary versus the face of the bulkhead.
And that's seventy-five feet?
That is shown on the survey by.
Well, I mean, in some cases, in some cases, I, you know, that, I don't know whether it's here, but, but I've seen where there is a bulkhead. That they, that they also call that a bluff.
Can't even see that number.
No.
Twenty-nine something?
Where, which one are you looking at?
Okay, because, because that, because.
That's quite right.
Because if, if there was a bluff, then the setback would be from the bluff rather than from the wetlands, that's all I was trying to determine is to, is to whether we needed to establish the, the wetland boundary or the bluff boundary, that's.
And the upper right-hand corner of the. Survey, just above where, where the wood bulkhead is, you'll see this, it says, the survey is plotted. Wetlands that face a bulkhead determined by Suffolk Environmental in November of twenty-three.
Great, okay, so the string.
We kind of need something we can read.
Yeah.
And maybe that's.
Let's hear this.
This is, we've never, I've never been given anything this small, ever.
And there's a survey, this isn't a survey, this is a representation of the survey on my site plan, the survey is actually called out.
Do we have that here?
Yeah, this is, this, this is it, right?
This is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is just to help.
Are there strings on there, are the dimensions on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so you see this green line here, this is the area vegetation that grows over onto the neighbor's property and on both sides. In the center, it's open, and it's been that way for as long as I've lived in San Diego. I knew this gentleman's father.
This is just beach grass, it's.
Beach grass growing, but it's considered.
But where is the wetlands line on this property? And where is the setback line on this property? I guess, I think that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Well, you've got. Let's see, the existing situat- this is. Those are.
It sounds like.
This is the proposed.
Yeah, I mean, the house is certainly within seventy-five feet of the bulkhead, it's been there forever.
Thirty-nine feet from the bulkhead to the mean.
I mean, this is existing conditions.
Yeah.
And we're just improving those conditions, that's about it.
Right, but we are mandated to be sure that the dimensions of wetlands and buffer are in your documents and that we can read them.
They are.
And that's what I'm trying to see here, you see the wetland setback?
Yes.
Okay.
Him is pretty good at this.
It says wetlands that face a bulkhead determined by Suffolk Environmental.
Thirty-nine point two.
And that's down on the beach. That's pretty typical of everybody a- along Terry Drive.
And where's the seventy-five foot line for the buffer?
Well, that'll be inside the house.
Yes, we, I think we know that, but I think the question is just for informational purposes, I think we'd like to see that, cause we normally do.
Cause we could also have some buffer coming up alongside of the house.
We, if you, if you want to condition the permit on putting in some native grasses, we can do that, but it's gonna be around the existing structures.
We put that in this, it's in.
I think that's in the planting.
Yeah. It's in his plants.
I think the proposed uh. Paper patio should be exced.
Let's stay on one thing, but we're kind of jumping around a little bit. But, um.
We don't know how much buffer is here. I don't.
So generally.
Twenty-two point eight feet on the east side and.
Well.
Twenty-nine point three feet on the west side of the house, uh, excuse me, of the uh deck. And then we can come up further, up to the proposed deck that's on the west side.
How many square feet does that?
Yeah, so what we normally do is we take like the width of the property times fifty feet, because that's what's mandated, right?
Right.
Right, but you can, obviously can't do that, so you can offer it in a different sort of contiguous kind of form and fashion to come up with the same amount of square footage.
This is the closest to the.
We, we need you to measure it and calculate.
This, I'll give you the calculations.
Yeah, that's what we need.
I think it's this, this line right here, this is.
And it's got a dotted line, but it doesn't say.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, but we're proposing to vegetate with native ground, miscellaneous, you, plantings all around the entire house up to the side.
So we just need to have that in.
There's no dimensions on that.
Oh, I, you're looking for dimensions.
Right.
On this plan to reflect the.
Yes.
Just to kind of summarize, the, the changes you're making aren't moving anything closer to the water. Correct, in other words, you're replacing a deck here, you're replacing a deck there, in the same location as the current.
Correct.
And then the infill on the front of the house is not.
To get closer to the bulkhead, knowing it wouldn't be approved.
Okay, and in some cases, it's a, it's a, it's a, I believe it's a concrete deck, and you're replacing it with a deck that would be curvaceous.
Yes.
But the infill on the front of the house is also no closer to the bulkhead. That's where the infill is occurring.
Front of that, yeah, it's way, it's the furthest you can get from the. On the front of that, yeah, it's way, it's the furthest you can get from the bulkhead.
On the wa- on the water side of the house. That's the front yard of the house.
Yes.
Well, there 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 there's some red lines here, one of which says proposed paver. That's north of the and very close to the bulkhead. And there's another staircase in red. I don't know if that's an existing.
So that is a proposed permeable paver, no terrace.
So one thing.
But there's already something there.
Right, is we need this bigger so we can really understand what's going on. Like, it should be this big, so we're not like, you know, using a magnifying, you know, thing on our phone to see that.
We're requested to add a lot of information after the drawing.
That's, yeah, we like that. We like a lot of information, but it needs to be in a way that it's accessible to us. And then Dennis, you said it.
It scales at twenty.
Yeah.
For instance, to 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 the east of the stairs. Okay, I I'm looking at one one survey and I'm looking at another diagram. And on one, it says proposed paver patio. And the other, it says new permeable terrace for the same location. Okay, now are you telling me that that one of those is already there?
No.
Yeah.
But some, what what is what is there right now?
There's nothing. There's grass.
Okay, so 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 this is a, okay, so you're replacing grass with this paver patio.
Right. Um, one of the numbers that we like to look at are the existing buffer square footage. So let's say.
Existing buffer?
Yeah, so let's just say you've got fifty, say you have five thousand square feet. So you gotta you gotta quantify what you have. And then you have to quantify what you propose as the buffer. And 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 we need those in real hard square foot numbers.
But.
It might be easier if we do this on the landscape plan rather than trying to get this survey more complicated. I can get this.
This survey just needs to be bigger.
I can make it bigger. I can make it thirty-six plus thirty-six, yeah.
Okay.
Um. I don't know if that's gonna help, but I think the, if you're just looking at the planting plan and you superimpose that over this, it might help you better. But we can do it both ways. We can.
Yeah, and the planting plan has to have dimensions on it as well.
Can I ask a question? Is that permeable paper patio within, you know, three feet of the bulkhead? That's against code, correct? Wouldn't that be violating?
It's a structure.
The board does not approve that general.
No, so that's that's out of the question, I would believe, because that's not.
Right.
That's.
That's a new structure that is uh.
Within seventy-five feet.
That that pretty much is not what happened.
And I believe they're essentially asking you to vegetate and provide a proper native buffer that would help catch water and give. Yeah.
But yeah, that I think is on.
Pavers on the buffer.
Out of the drawings, these drawings with new dimensions, so you can formulate this and understand it relative to the site plan that Hammer's provided. So we're giving that information so that this makes sense more than just showing planting layout.
Really, really brings up a good point. You can't put permeable pavers, even though they sound nice. You can't put them within like seventy-five feet of the um, the mean high water or the whatever we're talking about here.
Yeah, that was not brought to my attention.
Right, okay, so we're redoing some things here, yeah.
So, and yeah.
Yeah, I think overall, I mean, what what one of the things we'd be looking at is is what's the current amount of of vegetation in terms of if you call it a buffer or an office lawn, I think it's basically a lawn.
It is lawn.
Uh, but, you know, is are we getting more vegetation, you know, or less?
Oh, you're getting a much different, more accurate to.
Well, that's what we, that's what we need, that's what we need, that's what we need.
Talking thin grass or whatever we're thinking.
Grass doesn't count as buffer.
I'm saying. What we're proposing is very indigenous.
Okay, so.
The problem is, there's no dimension signs.
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I.
I realize it's not well calibrated in terms of.
And again, for your for your for your benefit in terms of doing this, if if you're saying that there's that there's now so many square feet of of vegetation, that there will be, you know, an additional so many square feet of of.
With the vegetation, if it's lawn, that doesn't count.
Well, I doubt, it's not lawn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
I'm sorry, I hadn't seen this prior. They're doing a beautiful native revegetation and drifts.
You're talking about what's there in the plan?
Yes, they're taking away lawn and and putting in more natural vegetation.
Because they're getting terr- they have the terraces, the nice terraces.
But 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 I'm not, we don't have a calculation as to as to the square feet.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna push pretty hard for an IA system.
Yeah.
Well, I've got it written down.
Yeah, and you can put them on the driveway. So that's something you should to discuss with your with your client.
Well, if you need some documentation about how much they help, you know that, you know.
Well, we, yes, we do it on all of our projects.
Okay, good, so go make this an exception.
And we're close, most of them are placed.
You can do it, you can do it on the water.
Yeah. Huh?
Quality care.
Yes. Yes.
It just wasn't.
Three boxes.
Up until this four, it wasn't brought up as a requirement.
Quality information.
Oh.
Get stuff from.
Right.
Recognize the the design.
I don't know how, no, I didn't want to listen. He's coming in every day.
It's named a permeable paver patio.
I I understand that.
But I think they want to read.
Brent, what's the, what's the?
I'm not telling you what you.
What what's the the uh, read on pavers, any type of favor in a buffer?
Says no.
Or it's generally not approved for any kind of structure.
That's right.
No, it's part of the, it's part of the structure. It's not.
It's a structure, yeah.
It is like, it's.
I mean, it's.
Your paver is on sand.
You put a brick down with holes in it, it's firmly rolled, but it still has brick.
Right, thank you.
Surface area of this paver, even though it's on sand, water will shell. I guess that's technically not a structure, but it.
Well, it is in our book, yeah.
The other course question I had is 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 it, I see a proposed dry well on the property, but but I don't see existing dry well. So so what I was concerned is with the with the runoff from the property, I don't know whether there's runoff through the the bulkhead. I don't know whether there are other dry wells for runoff from the roof of the of the of the house or not.
Oh, you mean currently?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I am, I've not surveyed it to see where the current dry wells are and how the.
Or if they exist.
Yeah, however, I mean, they run into the.
I think what we can do is we can have the surveyor run the calculations on the roof runoff.
Yeah.
For the entire structure.
That's required.
And the number of, and the number of dry wells that are there now plus any more we may need.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we did the calculation for, and that's what's proposed here.
That's why we got the.
So I calculated these.
But he's not showing, I don't think he's showing.
We don't show it as this thing. Uh, we do know that they go, you know, the leaders tie into ground into some kind of system that was, you know, civil civil engineered at some point, but I don't have.
Probably into the bay. No, you need to have, show your calculations of your run, of your.
But at least we're doing a new system.
Okay.
Sized dry well system.
What's a?
Where, is there a permit that's that's posted on the outside of the house?
Yeah.
There is? Okay.
No, actually, I didn't see that. I saw that there was a public hearing tonight.
Yeah, I didn't see a permit.
I didn't see a permit. Yeah, the the about this, but no, we're talking about a building permit.
When did you get your building permit?
It was, say, March or April.
Yeah, the old guy.
Posted it in the window so it's visible.
You need to make it visible.
Yeah, it it was, it must.
It might be, I may have just missed it.
All right. So thanks for staying so calm. Because some people go.
Okay, so you have your homework. You have your homework. Please increase the size of your survey. Please document the existing buffer square footage and your proposed. Um, remember that no pavers can go into the buffer. Um, look into an IA system. Um, we are not going to approve the patio that you have. This guy right here. And the decks can't be expanded. They can be, you know, renovated.
Right.
Et cetera.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just. I'll just read from the survey here, you know, n- number four, no wetlands lines are shown herein. Zoning setbacks in our allowed area computations may be different if the existing property is within regulatory distance of any existing wetlands.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's a disclaimer on your survey, so.
That's a C Y.
Yeah, well, I know, I I I understand that, but but you can't say there's wetlands lines on here whe- whe- when the surveyor is saying they are, so.
Well, technically, he's wrong because he did show the area of the vegetation on the beach.
Right.
And that is in fact the wetlands. I've walked it before.
But that doesn't concern us. We're 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 south of the of the bulkhead. And there are no.
There are no wetlands north of the, uh, south of the bulkhead.
No, I know, but we need to know the distance.
We're gonna get that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's see you next month.
All right, so enough, you have a lot of homework to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And I had asked.
Wait, wait, Brent.
But, so there's, so there's calculate, there's three proposed new dry wells. And and those are calculated to take all the runoff from the from the roof.
That's correct.
And so it's not, we're not relying on old dry wells that are not that are not shown here. You're recalculating that.
Because they don't know.
I don't.
Got to add in here, right?
Okay.
Got to.
Mr. Reiner has a has a comment?
It's gonna be quick.
Okay.
I've heard that before.
But I just, I just want to be clear that, you know, MPD is supporting some things to make sure that the harbor committee is applying their standards, you know, equally across the board. Firstly, I would recommend that you guys reread the last place memo that we gave to you in terms of the weapon buffer standards.
Yes.
Look yourself with chapter two eighty-five regulations regards to the weapon buffers. Where it speaks to the need for calculating associated with fifty-foot buffer or a fifty-foot variable with buffer that's equivalent to the. So that would be important to show on just the calculation on the survey and then the planting plan will help aside with the survey in terms of how the actual the buffer. It should be labeled as a non-disturbing, non-fertilization buffer area. And will need to be consistent of complete native vegetation. Um, we do have some some issues with the the planting plan. Most obviously is that not be having a planting plan that shows anything that's not native to um, all mountains and specifically to Sag Harbor planting standards. Uh, Cassandra is not on, so I would just have designer look at the planting plan and make sure that it's all native materials. And again, outline and not that we try. We recognize that a permanent buffer would be part of this application on the side or to anchor the wetland buffer. Side is what we do. We're right with the 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 harbor committee standard on obvious buffers because they aren't set in line with the land in terms of future development opportunities. And I also highly recommend this on everything that we have been confused about with this project and what I'm here for. Be assuring to me that we weren't the only ones that were having a hard time with this. But a comparative analysis table or chart in some capacity to give the board a opinion is to what the existing setbacks are versus what the proposed setbacks are relative to the structural improvements. Pat, this patio, we call it patio A, is this distance fitting? It will be reconstructed to this distance, you know. Give the areas, give the setbacks, and I think it will help all of us be able to look at the plans a little bit clearly. The IA system, this is one of those projects where I think the harbor committee will want to look at their standards, ask the applicant to look at their standards. I believe you have the ability to implement it on this one. It makes sense, chairman's point, you know, your objective is to protect the groundwater, surface water and wetlands that are adjacent to this property. So I do recommend, take back to your client, that the harbor committee will likely put a condition on this permit that an IA system will be required, which means you will have to go back to the health department. So we will need a sanitary engineer plan to show the IA system relative to groundwater standards. Finally, a drainage plan. Um, I agree with the comments that were made, something that we actually did not really dig into, but I think it's appropriate to go beyond what you show here in terms of the dry wells and look at it. Given this, you know, this pretty extensive development on the property, it would be helpful to demonstrate that all of the surface water runoff from this property is captured. So that doesn't make a splash. We submitted a plan. Okay, I'm I'm saying for the existing and proposed, not just the proposed.
Okay.
So those are my comments, again, sort of building on what you had already said, but those are already my thoughts.
Very organized, very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in July.
See you in July.
You know, if you.
We're not sure what day yet.
Right.
Well, I'll I'll keep in touch.
So, you know, these meetings are recorded. We gave you a lot of comments. You can actually watch it if you want to.
Yeah, I I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, do I hear a motion to table?
Till the month of July. I make a motion.
Until July.
Till the harbor committee meeting in July.
Do I hear the motion?
I thought I made it.
Okay.
A second.
I make a motion, okay.
All those in favor?
Hi.
So noted, so our phantom July meeting. The next item is fifteen Bluff Point Lane. Is there somebody here that would like to?
Tell me that.
Present?
Roll it into July.
Do we need to open this to the public?
Yes. I make a motion to open the public hearing on, uh, I'm sorry, fifteen Bluff Point Lane.
By the way, excuse me, if if we had a public hearing open on the last one, did we ask whether there were any comments from the public?
We did not.
On on twenty-five Terry Drive, we had a public hearing open, is that correct?
Yeah.
We did, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we had a public hearing.
You just adjourned it, so if you didn't hear a public comment this time, you can make sure we hear it next time.
Okay, I thank you. Just if there's still somebody here who wanted to comment on that, hopefully say so, but, okay.
All right, so we are open to the public.
My motion for area A, I don't have a second.
Do I have a second on opening to the public?
Full second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Well noted, so we are now public for fifteen Bluff Point Lane.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, Anthony Vermaiden, sixty-eight Union Street. I am representing uh, the property owners of fifteen Bluff Point Lane. I have with me John Hamilton from Persuader Architecture, uh, Landscape Architecture and Ed Burke, uh, attorney. Uh, so, all right, I will, I guess, start with the um project narrative here. The subject property is on Bluff Point Lane on a suburban harbor code. And the property, it promises fifteen thousand two hundred ninety-nine square feet. The primary structure is a one and one-half story circa nineteen thirty bungalow with no significant operations or additions since its initial construction. A little over half of the existing primary structure is ceded of the fifty-foot wetland setback. Closest point of the primary structure is twenty-six point eight feet from the wetland boundary. Closest point of the primary structure is twenty-six point eight feet from the wetland's boundary. And the closest point of the existing deck is twenty feet from the uh wetlands boundary. The front facade of the primary structure is a non-conforming twenty-two feet from the rear uh streetward or streetward property boundary. There is also a back deck, a bulkhead permitted on September six, nineteen feet three uh and a small fire pit patio. A non-conforming storage shed is moved by the owner ahead of sale of the property. The aforementioned bulkhead defines the edge of the wetlands. The remainder of the property is almost entirely grass lawn with four large uh twelve-inch plus DBH trees. And a four-to-five-foot privet hedge along the free landward property boundaries. Due to the existence of the primary structure driveway lawn, little or no native flora exists landward of the bulkhead nor within the area that will be impacted by our proposed project.
Alright, okay.
Similarly, the existing conditions on the property landward of the bulkhead are unlikely to provide suitable permanent habitat paths for most native fauna. Most of the property is in FEMA X zone, although a strict well C word of the existing structure and proposed work lies in the FEMA A D seven zone. Our proposed project entails adding two one-story additions uh story additions and expanding the back deck. The western lane one-story addition will be fourteen feet by twenty foot six. The eastern lane one-story addition will be seven feet by nineteen foot four inches. The southern and nor- northern dormers will be twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-four feet and twenty-one feet wide respectively. The total GFA of the house, including the additions, will be under seventeen hundred square feet. And I would add that uh the GFA allowable for this property is uh, if this was a new new structure, would be a little bit over thirty-two hundred square feet. Um, so we're a little, just slightly over half the allowed GFA for the property. Uh, two deck additions for approximately thirteen feet and fourteen feet and nine feet by thirteen feet are proposed as well as reducing the depth of the existing deck by approximately three feet. Due to the location of the existing structure, both those one-story additions will be seaward of the fifty-foot wetlands setback. Closest point of the proposed additions will be thirty-seven feet from the wetlands boundary or ten point two feet landward, uh landward of the um or in other words, further away from the uh closest point of the existing structure. The closest point of the proposed deck additions will be twenty-five point four feet, uh which is once again five point four feet landward of the closest point of the existing deck. The composed uh, the closest um component of the proposed IA septic system will be approximately sixty-three feet from the wetlands. The existing cesspool, which will be removed, is taught of forty feet from the wetlands boundary. Existing site conditions, including the depth of the property, location of the existing primary structure, and Suffolk County Department of Health Services rules regarding the offsets from property boundaries and off-site infrastructures. Specifically, a village-owned storm drain, both make full compliance with the standards set forth in Village Code twenty two two hundred eighty-five dash nine impossible. However, this non-compliance will be offset by the following. One, the establishment of a natural native buffer not currently present along the landward edge of the wetlands boundary. Two, the removal of an existing cesspool and the installation of an IA septic system, which will help improve water quality in Upper Sag Harbor Cove. Three, the preservation of a nearly one-hundred-old dwelling in a neighborhood where similar structures have recently been demolished and replaced with much larger dwellings. Uh, and four, negative impact on existing wetlands and wildlife habitats. Suffolk County um County Department Health Service approval for a four-bedroom IA septic system was received on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three and will be installed in the southeast corner of the property. The existing sanitary system will be abandoned as per Suffolk County Department Health Service regulations and uh as a component part of the proposed project. A DEC letter of non-dockation was received on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, per the site plan proposed prepared by the Guardia Design Group, much of the existing lawn seaward of the fifty-foot wetlands boundary will we will be re-vegetated with a variable width, non-disturbance, non-uh fertilization buffer as a component part of the proposed project. With a the balancing percentage rebet- re-vegetated landward uh to facilitate access to the existing deck fire pit and uh existing dock fire pit and uh yeah.
That's good.
So that's just the basic narrative. Um just to give you, uh, you have the drawings here. Uh, this is the existing house as it's facing um Bluff Point Lane. Uh, these are the two proposed additions off to the side here, off to the side here. Um, this is the rear uh facing the cove. So once again, you have the existing house with the proposed dormers and your two small additions off to the side um in the east of the side.
Anthony, what's the, what is the actual uh number of square footage, like existing house versus the addition?
The existing house is, I believe, about twelve hundred uh square feet and they're adding about one hundred or five square feet or something.
A four hundred's away from me, um.
So fair, very much for this.
Yeah.
Light addition. It's so light, beautiful, so nice to see.
Do we have a mention of these?
Did you say existing was four hundred square feet?
They're just strange.
I I guess walking the site, um, the the property on the east part seems, is, was this two lots that were combined at one point, or?
It's quite possible, yeah. Um, it's uh, yeah, it's 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 an it's it's one of the reasons why we're here for the fifty foot is it's it's an unusual shaped property. Now, it's very wide, but it's not very deep at all. It's kind of point where the cove kind of curves inward. Um, but it is a very wide property and that that uh area to the right, oh, here's the thing behind here, uh is, you know, just right now, it's just we we lawn, uh, you know, just, you know, regular lawn with two large trees.
Is the um on your drawing, the upward boundary, is that all bulkhead?
Yes, the uh, this uh is entirely bulkhead. And um, it's it's not very much, if you walk the site, you would have noticed this.
I did walk the site, I just didn't go up there and look at the bulkhead. I was just wondering.
Yeah, I know, it hasn't been mowed in a while. I apologize for that. I kind of just realized that this morning when I was walking around there. Um. But yeah, bulkhead is the entire property. And this is the existing, yeah, obviously.
Yeah, I was just trying to feel like if whether or not there was erosion secondary to that bulkhead, but evidently it would have taken place to the left or right. Alright.
And to your earlier point about, you know, preserving a an older home in the neighborhood, whatever that's worth. Isn't this immediately adjacent to another property where?
Yeah, the Guardias.
Yeah, ironically enough, Chris Vervaria's own house.
I noticed that.
Very different sort of project, um, you know, came through this board a year ago.
Yeah.
And that was, you know, uh.
But similar in that, in terms of the proposal, in that the the theory of the case there was also any work that he was doing was not going to further encroach on any standards, whether it be a setback uh or a buffer. That which already existed with the existing house. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
So I must be looking at the wrong. What is the dimension between the um? I don't know, where are we counting it from the bulkhead? Are we counting the bulkhead as the mean high water?
Yeah.
It's four to the new addition, it's forty-three feet?
Is um.
On the left side, I don't know if that's east or west, but on the west.
Thirty, uh, closest point of the proposed addition to the bulkhead, which defines the wetland setback is uh thirty-seven feet, and that compares to the um existing house. The closest point of the existing house is um twenty twenty feet eaten, uh twenty point eight feet. So in other words, what we're doing is setback ten feet from the existing house. Or the existing closest point of the house.
This is really precedent setting.
Well, we've already set the precedent on the property, the stores, and thought I was.
I wasn't here for it. You guys said yes to that.
Well, it's been our general, I think, our general approach, where there's an existing structure and where the applicant has come in and demonstrated that they are putting in an IA system, they're increasing the buffer to regulatory standards. And furthermore, that nothing in the new construction, whether it be fully new construction or addition, is any further uh closer, more, any closer to the wetlands than.
Tell me, tell me about this, because I don't remember this. We can take this offline.
Yeah, well, we'll have to talk about it another time, but we've done this many times.
Yeah.
Wouldn't we have? Cold road. Not mine, not mine, but also another one's.
What a great presentation.
So nothing is any closer than it is now?
So here, here.
That's not true, John, the new additions, there's nothing there right now.
No, wait a minute. Wait a minute, there's a enclosed porch and see where that is the deck to be removed.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, proposed deck addition is in line with the enclosed porch.
Right.
And the proposed on the west is the same.
And what is there right now, grass?
Uh, yes.
But the enclosed porch is existing.
The enclosed porch is existing, but this is not, this is not, that's.
Which you're removing.
No, no, no. This is both, this is grass and this is grass. Right? And then there's deck that comes out straight from the enclosed porch, that's part of the enclosed porch, to be removed there.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
I see, so Anthony, uh, the deck to be removed, is it just that narrow, or is it the place with the steps also?
It's uh, it's the free feet, uh, the free feet of that existing.
Okay, and then so you're gonna.
So in other words, it's gonna be reduced in depth, in in depth.
So you'll keep the staircase uh down to.
I think that's new. Are there stairs there now? I don't remember seeing those.
Uh, yeah, there there are stairs there. I think they actually come out. I'm trying to remember, I think they come out the front of the deck.
Right, this is all new. You know what's helpful in these situations, and maybe it's here and I'm just not seeing it, is seeing the existing four footprint, which we see here. But it's helpful to have it really clear as to what's existing hard structure versus what is proposed hard structure.
So you're saying that this is this whole thing is new?
Yes.
Yes.
I get, A- Anthony? You you're saying that all of this is new? This is going?
This is, this is um.
It's like fish right now, right?
Yeah, exactly. That's that's the existing deck.
So they're adding this, and they're adding this, and they're adding this, and they're adding that.
Right.
The closed porch is there.
Yes.
The closed porch is there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But it's not winterized, right? It's just an enclosed porch.
Yeah, it's not winterized.
Are you gonna winterize it?
The, we're not planning to, no.
So in fact, you're increasing the distance to the wetlands by three feet?
Right. I mean, you know, if this is, I will say that I'm authorized to say this from the homeowner's perspective, and we've talked about this anyways, that, you know, this is something that's a, we're caught up on, we can certainly remove that, bring this all back in line.
Well, architecturally, we we could just ask a question. I mean, um, if you got rid of all of this, couldn't you get your staircase off of these guys?
Yeah, no problem.
Well, that's the first, give me.
Yeah.
I would say that. Um, I mean, I, we have to discuss these things, but um.
I, yeah, I'm having a hard time having these decks added. You know, there's deck here. Why do we want to fill in this, which is now like vegetation with hard structure?
Well, it's grass.
Well, right, exactly. And now we're gonna be putting hard structure on them. You know, that's, I don't really understand how we're being respectful of two eighty-five by saying, yes, you can put those decks there.
Well, if I if I looked at the.
They're thirty-five feet from the wetlands.
If if I looked at the calculations here, I I I thought that uh, and it it may be in in Nelson Pope before his comments, but um, that your proposed buffer i- is roughly six thousand something square feet. Uh, and the equivalent of a fifty-foot buffer would be seven thousand seven hundred square feet. So Brent, was that your calculation, or?
So I was gonna ask uh John to clarify that, and I'm sure he can speak to it.
Okay, I'm I'm not sure whose, I saw the calculation, I'm just not sure whose it was, but.
It's still weird with the numbers. I I can clarify that.
Yeah.
Uh, John Hamilton, Nice Work Design Group, nice to be back here in front of you all. I'm excited to be back.
Sure.
Um, actually, on this plan, the two-point-one uh fifty-foot wetland buffer equivalent would be about seventy-seven hundred square feet. We're proposing about sixty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, the existing lawn is ninety-five hundred square feet. So I think I'd love to show you what we're proposing here, but I do wanna go back to what's out there now, because I think that's a huge part of this project and and the Harbor Committee even. So this site is a little bit overgrown, but the entire site above the bulkhead is mowed lawn, mowed, fertilized lawn.
Not mowed today.
Not mowed today, but in past years, that's all this is. There's a couple trees, but we're gonna try to save all the mature trees. But then the rest of this is mowed fertilized lawn, and on top of that, the site at Bluff Point Road is at about elevation twelve. And at the top of the bulkhead is at about elevation seven. So all of that surface runoff is running right down into the water, exactly what you don't want, both for erosion but also for contaminants or everything that comes along with a mowed landscape. Um, so what's out there now is just a really bad ecological situation for this neighborhood. Um, and what we're proposing here is to preserve all the good things on the site, the large trees, the canopies, all that will be uh kept intact.
The scale of the house.
The scale of the house, Anthony did a fabulous job with that. All of the landscape structures, you know, the driveway is not changing, the entry walkway is not changing, there's a small gravel pad with a fire pit that's not being expanded, that's being left in place. And then we're wrapping pretty much the entire property in native vegetation, not just grasses, but woody shrubs. There's quite a bit of shad trees, a really nice native tree going in, uh, then an American holly hedge um on on the one property line. Um, and then even the lawn on the seaward side of the house is completely being removed. So even to the dock, you'll you'll see a note on here on the two-point-one, uh, it's just gonna be a mulch path kind of around the decks into the dock, so from the close to the plane of the front house to the water, there's no more mowed lawn at all.
So you're not gonna redo the gravel driveway? Because it's probably a tar base right now, it's probably not pervious, right?
Yeah, we would put back just simple gravel. It's not meant to be oil and stone or asphalt or anything like that.
Right, because a lot of times people come in, oh, it's a gravel driveway, well, it's like, you know, quite impermeable.
Yeah.
Because they've got like a base there, and then they have gravel sitting on top of it, which is sort of the lipstick on the pig kind of thing.
We would want it to be pervious, for sure.
Right.
I forgot much one big thing also. The existing sanitary system, uh, both of the structures are inside the fifty-foot wetland buffer setback. So those are probably forty to forty-five feet from a tunnel boundary.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And those are going to sixty.
Is your, is your client slim in the bay right there?
I I think they they do, actually, um.
So we very thoughtfully worked with the engineer, you know, there is a big existing tree kind of where we wanted to put the new IA system, like as far as possible.
Good, good.
So, but we worked with the engineer to set the subject tents kind of, you know, this area close to the house, a long pipe and then the leaching fields all the way in the back corner, preserving the tree and putting it at the furthest point away from the side of the land.
How many bedrooms in the existing?
Um, there are, uh, leave the COs for four bedrooms.
And what's the.
The the two bedrooms on the second floor are like tiny, and that's the reason for the uh, for the dormer additions on the second floor, just to make those two little bedrooms a little more.
So you have existing four?
Yeah.
And what's the proposed?
Four.
Um. You've done a lot of good work, uh, and your information is is very uh well documented and helpful. That gets you on up to the batting box, but um, any comments?
Well, as you say, I I don't, I I mean, there was, there was some comment about the the new decks proposed and and I those those are going with this existing lawn, is that correct?
Right.
Uh, but on the other hand, you're giving us a lot of buffer, we're moving lawn, so I mean, I don't think I have a I have a problem with the fact that you're putting deck where there's vegetation, because we're 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 changing from a lot of lawn to 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 a good deal of of buffer.
And these will be decks supported by uh structural columns or something like that? Will that be?
Yeah, I think there's a specific way they're supposed to be made, and I think I have this in the construction narrative somewhere.
I don't mind this, yes.
Yeah, it's uh MCA uh framing and untreated wood decking, I think is what you you folks like to say, so that's how they'll be.
So gravel underneath the docks.
How difficult would it be, Anthony, to um bring your circulation down um within the plane of the enclosed porch? In other words, uh, eliminate all of the, all of this geometry.
Yeah.
And put your steps within this volume going down. So we see nothing here except buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this stays, this this volume stays, but just put your, engage this in this area.
No, no problem at all. Um, in fact, we, you know, as I said, we were having internal discussions with the client that that just might even be a more uh aesthetically.
It might be nicest to.
Easy way to do it anyway, so.
Formally, it might be nicest to have that going down.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
I uh personally, I think that if you made those kind of concessions, that's something to bring back in July, and we can kick it around a little bit more, but um.
Yeah, I'm the outlier here. I don't really like the idea of replacing, putting hard structures there.
Really?
I'm the outlier.
I think the benefits outweigh putting a small deck on.
No, 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 these aren't so small. They're two small ones. They're they're two decks. I don't know what size they are, but they're, you know, they're hard structures.
I would say that the amount of debt that we're removing is probably equivalent to the amount we're proposing on the side, especially if we bring it back to the lay of this.
Yeah, wait, wait.
That would be a really good.
I think this is the only thing that's being removed right here.
We need somebody with a hand up?
Oh, go ahead.
I think your comments are well heard, and if I could just make a recommendation. And I had a quick sidebar with John about this, because they did a great job on this with the nine-bluff application.
Yes.
I think a comparative analysis diagram with a chart next to it will go a long way for you guys to be able to see the existing and proposed. I think a comparative analysis diagram with a chart next to it will go a long way for you guys to be able to see the existing and proposed.
Yeah.
Similar to what I just mentioned to the last applicant.
Yeah.
It helps you to understand that the existing and proposed setbacks in areas relative to the well end, and you can do that with all of the structures, decks, house, so you can compare the volumes and areas. And then second to that, a demolition plan, so you can see exactly what's being removed from the house, what's being removed, what decks are being removed, whether they're being removed, all relative to the proposed improvements. And if we'll just, again, make the record clear and give you guys a better understanding as to what's being proposed. And then since I'm since I've had the floor, um, the only other thing I would recommend to Mary Ann's point is, we do have a lot of lawn in the fifty-foot buffer, which, you know, generally we want to see as naturalized there is, so perhaps there's a way they could take some of the volume of the. Firstly, they should match or see the fifty-foot wetland buffer equivalency, and then take the volume of the wetland buffer naturalized vegetation and pull it into the lawn that's within that fifty-foot area. That's generally what this board tries to do. The variability factor usually comes into play when you have structure and you have to wrap around it.
Yeah.
Because it's in, it's within the setbacks. I think they have a lot of lawn here that could be absorbed as, you know, they still provide some kind of naturalized area along the road, but take more of that volume and put it into the fifty-foot area where you really want it.
Exactly.
That root structure to absorb those nutrients better and keep the fertilized lawn further away from the lawn.
Yeah.
Those are my those are my comments. Other than that, I think it's a great application.
I'd also.
I believe Anthony did a great job on the house.
Yeah, and I'd I'd like to commend you and your client for scale. It's uh tough these days not to build a very large structure, given all of the constraints. I think also, just speaking as a person who likes to be near the water, I I would be loathe to take away your opportunity to enjoy that, and that's what a deck does in a certain way. So in this application, it it makes sense that you have some way of getting outside of the house, outside of the enclosed porch, and sit there and, you know, um, enjoy the site. You 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 could build some, what what do you think you could do um as of right?
Thirty-two hundred, three thousand two hundred fifty square feet, I believe, is the GFA allowed, and we're at a little under seventeen hundred square feet. So, yeah, and it's thirty-five feet tall, and I think our rich height is like maybe twenty feet tall.
Yeah, this is.
It's modest.
I I think it's, uh, and if you look across the street where I tried to park, that that thing looks like it's a three-story shingle thing that that's the inevitable thing that we do. So you're to be commended. I think if you could take these comments and.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, what we'll be coming back to you with is uh showing this deck, existing deck completely removed, brought back to the line of the existing porch. The calculation showing that the proposed decks will be no greater or approximately the same size as the deck to be removed. Uh, that's no problem at all. Uh, we'll maybe pull the um pull the non uh pull the re-vegetation buffer back a little bit from the uh from its closest point here, which will actually be easy to do with the spec gone, and it just kind of fill in that area there, you know, um, and um, that will be, that will be it.
Could I ask you a question?
And we'll get the buffer to be the net zero with the actual fifty-foot buffer.
Okay.
We'll get that.
I think you said, but I couldn't hear, under the deck is gravel. And non.
He was gonna check on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, whatever, whatever is for whatever the for.
Drain down and continue.
You can just put it on top of the lawn that's there now. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just natural ground, you know.
Yeah.
So I, you know.
Little moss garden.
Yeah, the the only, yeah, yeah, just two quick questions. One, I comment is you can have an unfertilized lawn too, so it doesn't have to all be fertilized. But the other question is, you had talked about the slope uh to down toward the water. And my question is 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 whether that slope is gonna be changed or 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 whether anything else is being done to mitigate the runoff? And in other words, even with a planted buffer, if you have a certain amount of slope, you're still gonna have to water run. We did that at the at the LaGuardia.
Next story. Two great points. So actually, point one, I I neglected to mention this, I'm sorry. Uh, all of the new lawn will be a native fescue lawn, no fertilization. And the seedlings are drawn, so yeah, there is no new fertilized lawn going back in this project. Um, and then we definitely should add that trench drain along the waterfront edge of the lawn, even the fescue lawn, just to catch any.
That's a tough one, isn't it? Because your natural, your natural
It gets tied to one of the root.
Topography is to go towards the bulkhead. Did you guys do like a little swell or something?
It was like a little hip swell just to pitch into the trench drain.
Yeah, you might look at that, Anthony.
Yeah, we can't regrade too much because of the trees, trying to preserve the tree.
Uh huh.
That's the that's the balance.
Yeah.
Good job.
Well, I mean, that's the whole point of the buffer, guys, is the root structure will absorb those. If you put the buffer in the fifty-foot area where it's supposed to be, the roots of the vegetation do that, you don't, shouldn't need a trench drain.
Depending on the greater the slope.
I don't think it's that significant there.
No, okay.
Yeah, but you know, with the torrential range that we're having now, it's a big demand as these roots to be absorbing that much water is the fact.
It is an expansive area.
I know, but the rain coming down is torrential, and it's coming down equally across that fifty feet. So I kind of like the idea of having the trench drain there, and then that can like feed back into the roots.
Easy addition.
See what you can do to that.
Sure.
And um good, good project, you um you might consult with the people that applied before us to show them how to do a good presentation.
So, yes, and I want, I I really wanna see like the, you know, on one hand, there's this, and on one hand, there's that in terms of what you're removing and what you're adding.
The reality is we're gonna have to do a demolition plan anyways for the builder, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
I I do want you to have enough deck though, so you can sit out and enjoy the view, but I don't want I don't want that to be taken away.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
And congratulations on no swimming pool.
Lovely.
That'll be the next application.
That's phase two.
Yeah, that's, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good job. All right, get out of here.
Right.
I think that's.
Do we have any comments on this thing? It's a public hearing, right?
Oh, I do have one question. Um, when is the next period?
We don't know.
July.
Sometime in July, but we don't know yet.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
If you have any choice, we will be in the architectural review board, so we can dip both.
Where where is that?
I think it would be the second Thursday, second Thursday, or the.
Okay. I don't think your attorney should be charging full price for his time here tonight.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I make a motion to table, um, what is it, fifteen Block Point Road?
Right.
Lane until the July meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so noted, so we will see this in July. Do I hear a motion to Terrence? Are there any questions we have?
No.
Anybody? What was?
You've got my agenda, so I can't see whether we've got anything else.
Several years.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to?
We did LaGuardia, and then there was that little piece over there where there was a core of a house.
When we had talked uh earlier in the week uh about questions about where the what the mooring situation is, um, and uh wanting to have further information um on what the current status of 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 moorings uh is, whether there's anything proposed.
Is there, is there a uh updated chart with?
Oh, has mine on.
So.
Since that was discussed.
Once again.
I don't believe that's been back before the first case that was discussed.
And how how does one get that ball rolling?
Uh, you could reach out to your liaison on the board and speak to that.
I'm sorry?
You could reach out to your liaison from the building for trustees and speak about that, and that's when it's gonna be on next.
Okay, it would be nice to see the chart, right?
Well, there may not be a chart. I mean, if.
I don't think it's changed.
There there was a proposed chart, and then it it didn't, it didn't go through, but there's still an issue of.
Extended, that sort of discussion.
Yeah, so it'd be, okay, so I'll talk to Jean and then see.
Information, and then and then give it more time and have additional work sessions before the next season.
Exactly.
And it's just.
Right, and not wait until January or something to start the process, right? So to that point, the University of Rhode Island is doing an aerial survey of all the eel eelgrass in Long Island Sound, and then they're doing us a favor by actually doing the iconic estuary as well. And what they're doing is they are confirming what they see by satellite. And then Brad Peterson from Cornell is gonna be ground truthing it. So we're gonna have even more information about where our eel grass is, and I just went to this whole presentation. I mean, the amount of eel grass compared to nineteen thirty, it's like this much. It's this much. So it's really, and for whoever has input, that chart that they had, you had to like strain your eyes to see this little green filigree.
We need more, that that would be something I'll talk to Jean about. We we need to up the information so that.
Right.
I went out with Stony Brook last weekend, and we dragged several places of the of Maycocks Bay. You would not believe the amount of algae that you get. I mean, there's almost no marine life. It's like, yeah, it's all uh huge amounts of this.
Macroalgae?
Green salad that is.
Was that eel grass or is it?
No, it's algae. It's algae. You don't see unless you drag, and it was huge.
So let me just continue my thought for a moment, because once they confirm to their satisfaction, then the EPA slash PEP will give us eel grass moorings. So they can actually delineate on the water where with boys where the eel grass is.
Yeah, just two, two, two points. I mean, one, one is that the 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 last survey that I saw was provided by Cornell Cooperative Extension showing eel grass. The only eel grass beds in the iconic estuary were those in Sag Harbor Bay.
No, it's not true.
Well, that's the.
I'm sorry, Bull's Head Bay, I'll show you.
Okay.
And there's little bitsy pieces around Shelter Island.
Okay, honestly, the one I saw, I I'm I'm sorting it out because I wasn't sure it was true, but but the.
But it's de minimis.
Well, yeah, well, so if there if there were some others, they were small compared to the ones in Sag Harbor.
Right.
Sag Harbor Bay. But one, I would want to make sure that that they're not allowing moorings or anchorings in those eel grass areas this year, not waiting till next year. And and two, you know, just knowing what the situation is is on mooring permits. I mean, the last thing that happened was was actually, I I proposed that they, that if there were sixty-seven moorings out there now, that they make a limit for this year of sixty-seven moorings, and I think that was eventually passed, but but I don't know whether there are actually sixty-seven mooring permits out there or or or, you know, et cetera.
And that's a problem, because evidently there's no real log of the permits that are issued. Can you check on that, Liz? Is that within your domain?
Whether, I can ask the firm's office.
Yeah, if there's like a log of the permits, the mooring permits that have been given, because I've been told it doesn't exist. And I think there's a mandate that they're supposed to be. The thing, John, too, is about having the boys there. It's like, you know, the people that really study this stuff, even transiting across the eel grass when it's low tide can be detrimental too.
Well, that that brings up another point, which is the people in the Sands community, which I'm part of, have complained about the number of large boats that are anchored beyond the fifteen hundred square foot. The question is, how how condensed can we make this so that we don't go into the view corridor of these residents? And I don't know that there is any focus on that at this point. So the Sands community has complained about this because it is their beach. Obviously, after fifteen hundred feet, it's everybody's beach. But if the moorings are just saying, well, you can go over here, go closer to Barcelona Point and anchor or moor over there, that needs to be codified, I think, also. And that may be in the chart. If we approve sixty-seven moorings, anchoring, et cetera, how far east can we, what what's the realistic expansion of that area? So if we have the moorings in this area, is there a creep? And there has been a creep, so we need to look at that. So that that even though we've documented the sixty-seven locations, we need to look at where the anchorings are, because there are some large yachts there that some of which are anchored, some of which have moorings in the direction of Barcelona. And there are neighbors that are concerned about that. Personally, I like looking at the boats, so I don't I don't know. So we need to quantify that.
You you like looking at that yacht that you referred to as looking like a a a white sneaker?
No, that's not the one.
I just think they're bigger yachts in earlier and with the, as opposed to there used to be a couple slopes in. And then there's a Dutch guy's boat Farbay in the Farbay, but it's a different demographic while approaching.
So we we just need to have, I think, I think we probably all agree, a chart at some point, and the understanding of how many moorings and anchorings, anchorages are there, and a accurate read on the eel grass in the environment.
I think.
You know, I think this discussion was brought to gather additional evidence.
Yep.
So if you wanna send like a memo to the building for trustees, and that's some of the evidence we'd like to see collected, you could do that.
Yeah, we would like to be part of the discussion, so.
All right, I'll draft a letter to the board, but I'll to the trustees, but I'll also reach out to Jean and see what we can do.
But you you may wanna actually do like a resolution where you draft a resolution at these points. You can do it in a letter format, make sure the board votes on it, and then you could all sign a letter, or you could vote on that, so it shows from the harbor committee, not just chairman.
Okay, all right, so I'll.
Yeah, so you could prepare it for the next meeting, and then the board could vote on it on the next meeting after you give all your additions to it or changes, and then send it to Jean as liaison and ask them to consider those issues when they're gathering this evidence.
I like that.
So um one of the things that you and I have talked about, and it came up here today, is this whole thing about drywells and like the three-inch rainfall. So you told me that that's what a New York State regulation, is that what it was?
After the building inspector relayed that it was a New York State.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So what I'd like to know is, can we, do we have the authority to increase that? Because that was based on like whatever, hundred-year rains or something like that, and I got like all the the records from the sewage treatment plant where they they write down the rainfall, and we've had massive rains. So it seems to me that, you know, we should consider like that they should have to do drywells to absorb a four-inch rain or a five-inch rain.
Actually, two inches required.
It is two inches.
Two inches, sorry. Well, okay, but whatever we've got, it's not adequate.
Right.
That's a that's a good question. So yes, we can modify the code.
Do we have that jurisdiction ability?
Check on that. That's something I have to really look into.
Okay.
It's state regulation, it depends, but I can look into it.
If it's a state regulation, we can always exceed that.
Not always.
Not always, yeah.
We're to see.
Okay. That's a good, that's a good point, because it is, we we got these.
You're still allowed to require that every every parcel that comes before you keeps their drainage on site.
But that's the thing, they're not. You know, when you get these torrential rains of four or five inches, and they're set up for three-inch rain, two-inch rainfall.
I guess it depends how consistent that is.
Well, it's, I'll show you. I'm having a graph made, you know, and I'll show you exactly where it is. It was quite surprising how much rain is coming in, and it's being monitored down to sewage treatment plants. All right, so we made your seven o'clock.
Do I hear?
But one one more question was still short of seven o'clock. One of the things that was raised today was was the requirement for for IA systems, and the language that you read uh in regards to or as required by the by by the harbor committee. And so it raised my question as to whether we do have or can have a policy to require uh IA systems on, you know, any substantial rebuild, let's say, within the the harbor committee wetlands jurisdiction, because I thought there was, I thought that we had put some provision into that extent, and and maybe the language just isn't isn't clear. And by the way, it was.
I have the liberty, but I wouldn't make it a policy. I would make it a condition of approval when it's warranted based on the application before you. I would never just make it a blanket policy. I would say you'd look at it on a case-by-case basis and make that condition of approval if you find it's necessary to mitigate the proposed structure.
Yeah, because we had.
On a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, we had a applicant on Harding Terrace, and we asked them to put in an IA system, and he said no.
We've had it a bunch, it's happened a bunch of times.
Make it a condition of approval of your permit.
Okay, onward, we're gonna do that.
If you make sufficient findings to support that.
Yeah.
But I mean, could, I mean, could we have a policy? But I mean, could, I mean, could we have a policy though?
I, I, I'm just recommending against a policy, like a straight policy is just.
Fred was much more conservative.
Application is different, every property is different. You wanna make finding specific to that application, that's the fourth board, that's all.
What is the saying is if you make a policy, you might extract yourself to, to a position where you don't wanna be.
Right.
Whereas if someone comes in.
I'm not discretion.
If someone wants, I mean, if you read the standards, read your two eighty-five standards, it's, it's pretty clear about those things that you guys can. I didn't mean that condescending, by the way, I mean, if you look at the details of the language.
Mm-hmm.
It, it gives you guys a lot of flexibility in terms of when you find it necessary to be applicable.
Okay.
If someone came in to put a deck on a property and met the standard, seventy-five foot setback, had a buffer in place. I believe it would be hard pressed for you to require an IA system on that application. But the ones we've heard tonight have a clear distinction associated with them, but they're, they're basically disturbing most of the site anyway.
Right.
And you could say that to offset any variance needed. A IA system would be applicable to benefit the weapons and the groundwater surface waters that you're trying to protect.
Right, and it's de minimis amount of money compared to what they're doing already on the project. I mean, that's above and beyond.
We don't know that about a second home.
Oh, well, even if it's thirty thousand dollars, they're spending a half a million dollars.
I agree with that.
But I think you would let the applicant come back, so you talked about the financial partnerships.
So one other thing, and I know we wanna get out of here, but one of the things that also concerns me about um rainfall. And in groundwater is I know that there's a rule that swimming pools have to have like two feet of uh. Before, on top of groundwater, on, on top of groundwater, right? But I think that's because they could actually be popped out through hydrostatic pressures or something. But doesn't it make sense that buildings and basements should not be sitting in groundwater? It just takes up space in the groundwater that then is gonna like contribute to flooding, huh?
Building, sorry, you said that makes sense with buildings now.
Yeah, can we, I understand, somebody told me today that people can put their basements into groundwater.
So there's.
An architect.
Where?
Here.
Listen, you can, engineers, it's very sad, they can design a lot of things, I think an engineer will say to you, anything's possible. So long as you're allowed to do, you know, creative engineering. So you can design structures in groundwater and act as backups. But current policy does not allow that to happen. They have to have foundations set to be above groundwater.
Is that true?
For example, Bobby, for the house on Vitali silly.
Sanitary systems on almost certain foundations as well.
Yeah, this guy today told me, no, that's not true.
In order for them to be able to build.
Yeah.
The foundation being groundwater.
You can't be in groundwater for a foundation.
Deep water.
Yes, that's the whole thing.
Continually deep water.
Deep watering requires a special permit from the D C, requires a permit from you if they're close to surface waters. Something that this board, that I'm not familiar with, has ever considered, so.
I don't know if we would even know about it if the building department signed off on it.
We would by looking at the high, the water line or the freshwater line, the water table.
Yeah, so I don't know, this all came up because of the incredible amount of flooding that's going on over at Grover Street. We get the kind of rains and it is just a lake over there. So the fact that, you know, yes, we have all these nice drywells. But you know, the water's coming down, going into the drywells, but the, and I don't know that this is the case, but I'm kinda going on.
No, 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 I'm gonna say, it is interesting though, for example, in the last application. I don't think we actually asked the question, is there a foundation under the two uh habitable additions that they're putting on?
Right.
Are those gonna be on slab or are those gonna be, what are the?
Right.
So it is interesting.
Also on Vitali silly, one of the houses that we approved, where they built two houses and they put a swimming pool. And they raised it up by five feet.
To get it above ground level, above groundwater?
Yes, so and additionally, those houses along Glover were all raised.
That's for FEMA standards, but it's not, because I'm just thinking like, you know, it's like Wapamol. And you put like a structure into groundwater, that water's gonna go somewhere.
What I understand about Glover is that the natural swale went to the bay. And over time, people backfilled it, built houses there.
Yeah.
And you've got a, you, you know, you've got a problem.
But there is a house on Glover that's consistently had water issues.
That's what I say, you don't.
Next to the.
Alright, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Oh, we were gonna discuss when the next meeting was gonna be too, but.
Doris, you can.